At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session, January the 4th, 20 of 21. And Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese will lead us into invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Commissioner Marty Pennell. If you all would, please rise.
I pray. Father, we continue today and we thank you for Alexander County. Thank you for each citizen, for all the good things you do for us. We pray that you would protect us from all these things that are going on all around us and with this virus. We pray that you would move it on out if it be in your will. Pray for those that have lost family members, those that are sick, those that are suffering through these things. Seminole, we're in an area that we've never been before, but it's in your hands. Thank you again for the blessings of this county. Thank you for protection, for all of our emergency services, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, all those who put their lives on the line for us each day. Continue to pray to protect them, our county employees, and even all of our citizens. Thanks for a good day today. Pray that you'd help us in this new year, in 2021, to do the best we can. And we pray for this meeting tonight, that you give us clear mind, that we would do, make wise decisions that would move Alexander County forward, and we give all these thanks to you, in thy name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, we have a special recognition that we'd like to do tonight, and I'd like to introduce one person there, Nancy Keys. Is Nancy with us? Nancy, on behalf of Alexander County Board of Commissioners and citizens of this county, I'd like to really say thank you very much for stepping in and being our interim director in this time between Mr. Rogers and our new director. Thank you for coming up from Ardell County and stepping in and helping us get through that little period of time there to take care of our county and the citizens that needed your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. And appreciate you.
If you would just come on up so you can speak with, yes, please.
Thank you very much, Board of Commissioners and County Manager. I do appreciate the opportunity for stepping in as interim after the retirement of Lenny Rogers as Director for Cooperative Extension. We appreciate the cooperation that we have received from the county, and I think Alexander County Cooperative Extension is going to be in good hands with Allison Brown.
Thank you, ma'am. And at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new Alexander County Extension Director, Mrs. Allison Brown. Allison, if you'd step forward, please. Congratulations.
I appreciate the, I'm appreciative of the confidence that y'all have placed in me with North Carolina State University and North Carolina Cooperative Extension, and I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Alexander County with our quality programming and working with our staff, our great staff that we have, and continuing to meet the needs of our county citizens, because that's our goal, that's our mission, is to provide quality programming for them. So it's an honor, and I look forward to it, and I won't let you down.
Thank you. We're glad to have you. Absolutely. And if you don't mind, if you'll just wait there a minute, your family, I know she's here with you?
Oh, yeah.
And your, and the interim director, if she'd come forward and if we couldn't get a picture of all of you together there and get our local news reporter there to take care of that.
Okay.
All right? If you all would, just come up here with her, and I think it'd be good.
Allison, while they're coming up, I'd like to say I feel certain that we're in good hands with you at the helm of the ship, and we're excited for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
There's a period of time in there, though, that we have to be careful about, isn't that correct?
A period of time?
Uh-huh. When your mother cooks dinner.
Oh, granny. When my granny, on Saturdays.
On Saturday. That's exactly right.
This virus has got in the way of that.
Oh, okay. All right. Congratulations, Allison.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Does any commissioner have any report they'd like to give tonight?
Mr. Chairman, it's got one thing. There've been a lot of people inquiring about the DMV, the License Agency on Down East, being closed, and Jeffrey Elmore sent a response. This is from Monica Fuller. She's the liaison from the NCGA, and according to what they're saying, there was, the small offices were closed during the pandemic because there's not enough room to space everyone out, and they're hopefully looking at, you know, spring of the year, hopefully if things is going to calm down, that they will be reopening. So I was just telling that to let everybody know that, you know, they haven't been forgotten. And as soon as they can, they're planning to, you know, to reopen that office.
Very good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting grand opening ceremony, whatever you want to call it, for a new workout facility in Bethlehem, and I'm going to read this so I don't say it wrong, Beats Bar and Bike. And basically, it is a, it was a very neat place, and it was, you know, it is, was opened and run by Alexander County residents, long, you know, longtime, very respected family, and just wanted to say, love to see new local businesses, especially run by local people.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. It's always good to see them open the hallways. Anyone else? You have your agenda before you're there tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Public comment, now, to the best of my knowledge, we didn't have anyone to speak, I mean, to sign up. Is there anyone here tonight that had anything they needed to say? All right. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is a public hearing, Historic Preservation Committee, Local Landmark Recommendation, Lucas Mansion, Connie Kincaid, Alexander County Economic Development. Gentlemen, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the ordinance to designate a certain property as a historic landmark.
Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise, motion carries. Connie Kincaid, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, Mr. French. The Historic Preservation Committee requests your consideration for the Lucas Mansion to be designated as an Alexander County local historic landmark. The adoption of the proposed ordinance is prescribed by North Carolina General Statute The Lucas Mansion today is the home of the Hiddenite Arts and Heritage Center. The mansion is preserved as an early 20th century house museum, art gallery, and serves as the county's tourist information center. The building was constructed in approximately 1906, with major renovations in 1914 and 1984. The property was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1982. The Lucas Mansion is located at 316 Hiddenite Church Road in Hiddenite. The original owner, Joseph Sharp, received 2,255 acres of land through a North Carolina land grant in 1809. The original estate, like most land grant estates, has been reduced over time to approximately one and one-half acres where the mansion is located. The original home was two stories. The original home was two stories, and according to the Alexander County Register of Deeds, W.F. Holler purchased the property in 1906. When he sold it in 1907, the land deed referenced a dwelling and a store. In 1908, James Paul Lucas purchased the property. Mr. Lucas was an international diamond merchant, also known as Diamond Jim. He was responsible for a major construction project in 1914 that raised the second floor of the home to become the third floor and inserted what is now the second floor, creating a 22-room mansion, bringing notoriety to himself, the mansion, and Alexander County. Following his death in 1952, the executor of his will sold the property to Howard and Flora Sharp of Massachusetts, and W.R. Thomas and his wife, Lois Sharp Thomas of Florida, who used it as a hunting lodge and a summer retreat. Excuse me. The house was vacated in 1971 and remained empty until Mr. R.Y. Sharp and his wife, Eileen Lackey Sharp, purchased the property in 1981. Eileen Sharp began immediately to preserve the home and ensure its future use. She hired a consultant that had the mansion listed on the National Register of Historic Places. She formed a private nonprofit organization for the purpose of managing a museum, an educational learning center called the Hiddenite Center. She also established the Sharp Foundation to sustain the property for the future. Between 1981 and 1984, Mrs. Sharp hired a statesful architect to design an addition on the east side of the mansion. The new east wing added public restrooms, more gallery space, and an elevator making the facility accessible to the public. The Historic Preservation Committee respectfully requests your approval by adopting the proposed ordinance to designate the Lucas Mansion as an Alexander County local historic landmark. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have any questions? As this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience that would have a question, this would be your opportunity to ask at this time also. There being none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing for the ordinance to designate the Lucas Mansion as a historical landmark.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance as stated for historic preservation, from the Historic Preservation Committee, local landmark recommendation for the Lucas Mansion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That's a very good place down there. Item number three on the agenda, COVID-19 update, Billy Walker, Assistant Health Director, and Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services.
I'm going to give you a quick update of COVID and how it looks in our county. As of today, we have 2,827 cases, and we've had 31 deaths. Those will drastically increase as we're getting the documentation from the hospitals and the area nursing homes and nursing facilities. So it's really, it's really closer to 40 as far as our deaths, so as soon as those are in and we get them documented, you'll see that number go up. We've got more than 19 hospitalized, and I left the quarantine and recovery blank because I did not have time to go in and hand count all those. And so it's a very tedious job to, to keep up with these numbers as, as much as we have coming in, and now we've had vaccine come in, and so that just added another layer to the issue. I will, I will let you know, we've got three facilities that have had outbreaks. We've got one that has 50 residents and 10, and 10 staff. We've got one that has 15 residents and staff, and then 47 at another one and staff, and one of those facilities have, has had 10 deaths, which we, we hate to hear that. I do think that this is a time where it is, it's really hitting Alexander County, and it's just really, really hard, especially on these families who are getting these calls that their family member has tested positive, and then a couple of days later, they get another call, and they're not doing well. And so it's just, it's just a hard time for those workers, so I definitely ask everybody to keep them in your thoughts and prayers, because those workers treat those, those individuals like family, and it's, it's hard to see that right now. We are continuing to do testing. We do that Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and it's still drive-through, so they just call and get on the list if they want to be tested. We did receive vaccine. We got 1,200 doses of the Moderna. It's a two-dose series, and it's 28 days apart. Pfizer is nine, we got 975 doses of it. It's two doses as well, and it's 21 days apart. Both are 95% effective. I'm not going to read all the phases, but we recently received an update from the state and the CDC that they have changed the priority listing, and they've added some layers to the 1A and the 1B, and so you can see that, that there. That is, this is very hard, because everybody's wanting to be vaccinated, and 1,200 doses of one, 975 of another, is not enough to really make a dent in our population. So that's why we are having to do the priority listing. Do you care, go to the next slide? Go to the next slide. We did meet with the, the county manager this morning and our team, and we created an appointment hotline. They can call 828-352-7724, and they can, they can make an appointment to have the vaccine, and we'll let them know if they're in that group or not. We've made it over 300 appointments so far. So it's, it, we're, it's overwhelmed, overwhelming what we're, what we're seeing, people calling in, and it's more than we've ever had to manage before, and so we asked the public to be patient with us. We will get them called back, and we will get them an appointment made. Just, just bear with us, because we're, we're trying our hardest to get all these calls filtered through. If you'll go back one, so after phase one, 1A, 1B, you're going to see phase two, and then a lot of people are saying, where are the students? Well, they're phase three, and then phase four is anybody who wants it. The state will continue to send us vaccine. They'll send us enough for the second doses as they did for the first, so a lot of people have asked that. We don't have to keep doses out for this vaccine that we just got in for that second dose. They will send us more. And that's all I have.
If, if someone has been positive recently, would they be well, better off to wait so other people who maybe haven't been could get the vaccine? Is there any science or cause with that?
Well, initially, we were told 90 days, and then in the questionnaire, it says, have you had COVID in the last 30 days? And if you say yes, it knocks you out and won't let you have that vaccine. So we don't really have a definite answer on that, but I will say, lots of physicians I've talked to, if they're still, if you're still having antibodies, they're, they're not recommending get the vaccine yet, but it says 30 days on the questionnaire from the state.
Okay.
And the questionnaire, we are not, we did not make the computer system that we're having to use. The state is mandating us to use a new system, and the system is not working well at all. And so we've gone to paper. So we've tried to make it easier for the population, but you have to have an email address, and our, our biggest population that we're worried about, they don't, a lot of them don't have email. So it, it doesn't make sense to have people who don't have access to a computer to make them have an email. So we've, we've printed out the questionnaire on paper, and that's how we're having them come in. It's just, they've added too many layers to this. If they would allow us to vaccinate like we normally do, we could get them in and out and, and get, see a lot vaccinated, but we have to go by their criteria and use their computer system, and it doesn't talk to our computer system.
They've got a pretty good track record of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Question on the vaccines. What, what rate is the state using to determine how many vaccines to send to Alexander County?
That I don't know. I, I do think it is if you have a hospital, how, if you're in the, the red versus the orange and the yellow, but I don't really know their algorithm of why they're sending, we, we, I don't know why we got 1,200 doses, and we weren't supposed to get Pfizer, and we got 975. So I don't know what their, their rationale is. And I will say, we did see that Samaritan's Purse brought a field hospital, and while that is amazing to see, it's also sad, because that means we're in a critical time. But we're a rural area who, who, we don't have tons of big hospitals with lots of beds. So that's why that's kind, that has come, is because we are overwhelmed. Our smaller hospitals are overwhelmed, and, but, you know, it's great that Samaritan's Purse has that option, and they've come and put it together, and they're working it. Any other questions?
Do you already know what the count of the additional vaccines that'll be on their way?
I don't. They don't, they do not tell us. I know we'll get 1,200 more of Moderna and 975 of Pfizer, but that's to back up that first dose, but I guarantee you, we'll get a, and I think we can actually request.
And those vaccines would be promised out to the ones that already received the first shot, correct?
Correct. Correct. Is that good? Anything else?
Good.
All right. Thank you.
Just need to, might remind everybody to wear your mask, stay away from one another, and wash your hands.
Yeah.
And if it's ever important right now, it's vitally important.
And definitely.
Because we'll see another rush here just purely because of Christmas holidays.
Yeah, and definitely call the, the new number that we have, and just be patient with us. We'll get you.
Exactly right.
Billy, we really appreciate what you guys are doing. It's uncharted territory and really tough. I mean, I told you earlier, I, you know, I know what it's like to try to contact trace when we had cases at school, and, you know, I'm just dealing with a handful, and you guys are dealing with thousands of people, and it's, I can't imagine how, you just can't do it. I mean, it's, it's impossible. I mean, if you had a staff of probably 20 people, more, you still wouldn't be able to do what, what you have to do. So appreciate everybody's efforts and hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Just wanted to give you a little bit of heads up for EMS aspect and emergency management aspect. We'll start with EMS right now, and I pulled the last quarter's data of calls ran in October, November, and December, and we ran approximately 1,781 calls during this fourth quarter of this year, which shows an increase from 2019 of about 25%. One of the other key things that I wanted to talk about, 73% of these calls either are dealing with COVID-positive patients or actually dealing with possible COVID-positive patients. We don't know when we get the call out, if they have not been tested or not. So we're dealing a lot with COVID patients, and we're seeing that increase in that. One of the things I talked with a couple people about, in the last seven days, we've had over seven hospitals. Now, I know we only have a few amount of hospitals surrounding us that we're allowed to transport to, but seven hospitals, and I'm just saying, this could be, the hospital A, be done two or three times, but seven hospitals in the last seven days have gone on what we call diversion, where we can't take any patients there, because we're seeing that influx of COVID patients, or we're seeing that influx of patients that are just sick, maybe having a heart attack, maybe having any other diseases or any other problems they're dealing with. And of that seven hospitals, that's 142 hours we couldn't transport there. As Ms. Walker was saying, that it is amazing that we're getting that hospital, or field hospital, set up at Caldwell area. That's 40 beds, and they're only dealing with COVID patients, and they're only dealing with COVID patients that aren't as vent-dependent or aren't going to need possible respiratory issues later on. But we got to look at, that's covering Watauga County, Ash County, even some of Wilkes County, and Alexander County, and Catawba County. So that 40 is not going to take long before, that time's not going to take long before we get filled. So that's one of the things we're seeing in the EMS aspect, 142 hours out of seven days. And if you look at it, if you did the multiplications and stuff, I could help you out. Let's look at the EM aspect and the emergency management aspect. Oh, excuse me, I want one more thing in EMS. Billy and Leanne were gracious enough next last week to actually get EMS employees that wanted the vaccination, get them unvaccinated. Everything seemed to go well, no adverse reactions and no allergic reactions or anaphylaxis that any of my guys dealt with. That wasn't a great amount, but that was still a step ahead or a step for the process to actually figure that out. Now, into the EM aspect, PPEs were actually good for the county itself. We were contacted by Valley Nursing Center, says, hey, guys, we need help, we need it bad. We asked them what they need, we talked with them, we worked with the Health Department and says, hey, what they need is manpower. They had so many residents and so many staff that were actually COVID-positive, and in that 14-day period, quarantine period, that they need help. We worked with North Carolina EM and my Emergency Management Director, Garrett Huffman, actually got them some help. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I've been dealing with Valley Nursing Center, talking on some phone calls. I think they got four EMT basics and, or in a paramedic to actually to assist. She started them working Sunday morning at 8:00, and I've talked with her, we actually got them working pretty good, and she knows that if she needs any other manpower or anything like that, to give us a call. They also needed some PPEs. We also called all the other facilities that we deal with, the, the group homes, the assisted living facilities, to see if they needed any help, so we could see what we could do to help them out or anything like that. We also worked with local facilities to get more PPEs, but, or show them how to actually purchase or get those PPEs from the state itself. We did have a new employee that started on Monday. He worked with us for about a week, and then I gave him over to the Health Department, says, whatever they need, he's doing it. He's already decided, talked about leaving early, because they've worked him to death today and making phone calls. He's man and not hotline. Remember, guys, this hotline is set up to help you get the vaccination time set up, plus it's to let you know that, hey, you're in that timeframe itself, but he's working pretty hard, and we got that set up. Other things, EMS is actually working real good with the Health Department. We are actually going to assist them in giving the vaccinations to try to get as much coverage as we can. As Ms. Walker was saying, we, you know, we've got 200 or 300 set up already for this week. They can't do it by themselves, so we're willing to come up and say, hey, we're going to help. We can give the same shots as they do, and we can determine anaphylaxis and stuff like that, so we'll know what to do and how to handle it, and we're working with them closely on that. Any other questions? That's about all I have.
Very good.
I'd just like to say, appreciate what you guys are doing and crossing over to help the Health Department. I appreciate it, and I'm sure the citizens of the county appreciate it.
Well, we've known over the last couple months, especially with the flood damage and stuff that we have, that we got to work together as a team, and we call that the Alexander County team, and so whatever we can do to assist.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Thank you. Yeah, no use to go anywhere. Item number four, local road, road condition updates, North Carolina DOT updates, Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services, and Gary Herman, Public Information Officer. Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services, and Gary Herman, Public Information Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're going to start off with some road updates, and then Doug will follow up with some photographs that you can see from some don't, grown footage and things. So, of course, we all remember the flooding that took place on November twelfth with the tragic loss of lives and property, but we had, what was it, about fifty roads that were impassable that day. So luckily, we're down to about fourteen or so now. Chairman Yoder and, and I, we've been keeping in contact with the DOT, the Division Engineers down in Division Twelve, because we want to keep our public informed of what's happening with our roadways. So like I said, I'll report on the roads, Mr. Gillespie will follow up with photos. Current damage estimate is five point seven million dollars. So here are the updates we have. This is as of December twenty-ninth. This is the last update that we received. So Millersville Road and Nestor Road have reopened, and that was on December eighteenth, so approximately a month and about a week. So pretty good work there from the DOT. They used their own forces for those two roads to get those open. That's probably one of the main focuses, as that's the, the bit, the main road that people were traveling. Unfortunately, the bridge on Cheatham Ford Road there at the old water plant, it was washed out at one place, as I'm sure you saw the footage on TV where the TV reporter almost fell in. So it's currently under contract for replacement, and they're thinking probably completed, he said aggressive schedule, would be December of two thousand and twenty-one to have that bridge totally replaced. We have a number of, let's see, we have six roads that are currently under contract for pipe replacement. That's going to be seventy-eight fifty-eight Cheatham Ford Road, nine fifty-eight Sulphur Springs Road, Sloan Road, nineteen forty-nine Barea Church Quincy Road, five ninety-one Barea Church Quincy Road, and Hopewell Church Road at Mill Creek. We have two roads where bids were opened on December twenty-second, and they were awarded, and work can actually begin tomorrow if the contractor so chooses to replace pipes on these roads, and that's Macedonia Church Road at Glade Creek and twenty-five thirty-five Rocky Springs Road. Smith Grove Church Road, the NC DOT forces could have begun pipe replacement today, December fourth, January fourth, excuse me. What month is it? I'm telling you.
What year?
I know what year. We have three roads. They have pre, onsite pre-bid meeting scheduled for January seventh for pipe replacement. So basically, DOT guys are going to be going out with prospective contractors, they're going to take a look at the project, discuss what needs to be done, and then they'll go from there. So that's Rocky Face Church Road at Presley Court, ten sixty-nine Lackey Mountain Road, and Judd Smith Road at Marlowe Road. The one that's probably going to take the longest, except for the, the bridge on Cheatham Ford Road, would be Old Wilkesboro Road near JC Park Loop. They're still having utility conflicts, which includes electricity, cable, and telephone. So they're trying to get all those utilities moved so they can fix the pipe there. As for, and I know people are still talking about Loudon Road, we're, we're almost there. We're going to be on stone hopefully by January ninth. I know it's been a long road since June two thousand and nineteen, but they're getting the job done, and they hopefully will be paving that by the end of March or even sooner, depending on the weather. And that's my road update. Any questions before Doug takes over?
They've done a very good job.
They really have.
They, they responded real well. They've been really, really good about getting the information to us whenever we talk to them, and I've been impressed with the fact that they, once it was declared a state of emergency, of course, the governor signed on the emergency, they were able to get the money released and everything, get the contracts out real quick, and they, they've done an outstanding job. And what most of them didn't realize is there's only probably about thirteen or fourteen DOT guys here in the county now. It's not like it was twenty years ago when they had about sixty. So those guys actually jumped in there, and they repaired a couple of those roads that you were talking about there. Our local folks did with some local contractors and stuff. So they did a really good job.
The Smith Grove Church Road, they're going to be coming from Cleveland County.
Yeah.
To repair that road.
So they've, they've done an outstanding job, and I really appreciate the assistance at Division Twelve that they've done and what, everything they did, and make sure they stayed on top of it.
But they'll use that crew that they used on Millersville Road, they'll get it done in a hurry.
Yes, sir. That was a pretty phenomenal job.
Didn't take them long. They did a good job.
Moved pretty quick. I actually, Loudon Road, I laid eyes on it over the weekend, was just riding around.
Uh-huh.
And there is, looks like the first packed gravel has been placed there, so they're coming along real good. But I'd also like to say, too, you know, there's a lot of roads that are closed. I know it's kind of irritating, but do not drive around those barriers to try to get through. There's been a couple instances that I know of of people just, they just drive all, for it's washed out. The barrier's there to keep you out, to, to try to protect, so, you know, just be aware of all of those things.
Exactly. The road may look fine, but underneath there are a side view, and it's gone. Barrier's there for a reason. Okay?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Doug? What I'm going to be just showing you, we went out, when we talked about this last week, week before, we decided to go out and try to take some, some little bit of footage so you could see what's going on with the roads and stuff like that. We've got some drone pictures here and stuff. The first thing I wanted to talk about was, we got to get this out to the viewers, we got to get this out to the public of Alexander County. As Commissioner Yoder stated, that the governor did declare a state of emergency, and what that does is that helps the people that got damaged to property or homes itself to actually start applying for these, what they call Small Business Association loans. And I think there's going to be some individual assistance, but before they can do that, they have to get all the information. Eventually, when we first started, we were going out to try to get that in, in information, excuse me, but now they're, with the COVID crisis going on, it's, you have to call, you have to get online and stuff like that. So we wanted to emphasize that to the citizens today, and, and we're pushing that towards, or pushing that as far as we can. I know Gary's put out a, a couple press briefings on it. Also, we're going to work with B-86 radio on Wednesday, or Gary and Garrett will be, and working on that. Next slide. What you see here is Old Wilkesboro Road. This is, to us in EMS, this is an important road for us, because this cuts off quite a bit of traffic going up towards the Little River area, up towards Highway sixteen north, towards the county line. So when we hear it's going to take a little bit because we're having some conflicts with utilities, we, we sort of get a little frustrated. And you see some more, some aerial views over there. Sorry about some of the pictures got a little bit blurry, but, and you see there's two sections that are opened up right there. Okay? Macedonia Church Road at Glade Creek, you can see the pipe that they got to be working on, plus we have, it looks like some utility, probably some water lines and stuff like that. We've been working with Energy United and also with the City of Hickory to look at that areas, to make sure the fire departments have enough water pressure and stuff, so if they need it, that they do. They've been working well with us in that situation, so. Another picture of it, you can see it there to your left-hand side, if you're looking at the picture itself. Next. Cheatham Ford Road, this is the big one. Surprisingly, we think, hey, that's not a major road for us, Cheatham Ford, just going up to the Iredal County area, but when you go up to the Vash Tower area and you say, okay, you can't go Sulphur Springs Road, you can't go this road, it takes a little bit of time, and I realize that, well, I've realized it before, but I actually worked Christmas Day because we had some employees out due to COVID itself, and my first call was up in the Love Valley area of Alexander County is what I call it. And it took us an extra ten minutes running priority of traffic to get there because we had to figure out which way was going to be the best to get there. But this is Cheatham Ford Road, so this cuts out a big road for us. You can see the overview of it. Like I said, when they initially started, they were just going to have to fix the bridge, but after they reviewed and after they looked at it, they're going to actually have to replace that bridge itself on that road, as you can see. Plus, they're going to have to get some debris removal when they work on that bridge itself also. And it took out a, a pretty wide section of that area. You can see where the storm, where the water went around the actual riverbank itself and made its own little new river. That's Cheatham Ford Road number two, and it's, looks pretty good, but we got out and checked it out, and underneath that road will surprise you how much is actually missing. Sulphur Springs Road, and see some water lines and some utility lines. Rocky Face Church Road right there, I think, at Presley Court. These are some of the newer pictures that we've got, so they're still open, and Hopewell Church Road, water lines again in that section, and some utility lines. Rocky Springs Road, same thing, looking at pipe damage and similar situations. Sloan Road again, we went and checked it out real good. It's still pretty good intact, but there is a big gap in underneath the road that you can't see. So please do not go around those. The first section of your Church Quincy Road, and there's two sections of this road, and we did actually respond to a call where the gentleman went around the barriers, and he ended up in the ditch. Well, the little ditch there. There's another view of it. We tried to get some drone footage itself. Second section again. And again, like we said, we put that slide on the first. We wanted to make sure everybody knows that if they do have property damage, or they do have home damage, that they can contact, since it was declared a state of emergency, to apply for low-interest rate SBA loans, and you can also look at, if you can't get the low-interest loans, they might can work with you on some individual assistance. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Doug, thank you, Doug. Good job. Thank you, Gary. Item number five on the agenda, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Food System Resilience Resolution. Our president of the association this year is one thing that he is really striving to do this year, is to get food to folks who really need it. And Ronnie Smith is the new president of the association. He was sworn in back in December, and he's working real hard about this. They found that whenever they were talking to the commissioners across the state at the association meetings, that there was a lot of people in the state of North Carolina that were having a hard time getting a food supply, and that they were running out of food at some of these food pantries. And so his initiative is to provoke, to promote this food system. And I will read this proclamation here. It says, "Whereas access to food is a basic human need and is vital to the well-being of a community, and whereas all one hundred North Carolina counties are committed to ensuring the needs of their citizens are met, and whereas food security defined as reliable access to quality, affordable food is vital to a thriving community, and food insecurity threatens the fabric of a healthy society. Whereas according to the Feeding America's Annual Map, the meal gap study conducted to improve our understanding of food insecurity and food cost at the local level, the average food insecurity rate across the state of North Carolina counties is fourteen percent. And whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic is only further ex, ex, uh, ex, exacerbating, how do you say that word, Jeff?
Exasperating.
Exasperating. The issue of food insecurity and families are facing difficult decisions about how to make ends meet, and whether, including whether they can afford the food they need. And whereas, it is projected that the food insecurity rate in North Carolina will rise to nineteen point three percent due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and the child food insecurity rate will rise from nineteen point three percent to twenty-six, twenty-eight point six percent. And whereas Alexander County has a food insecurity rate of nineteen percent. And whereas according to state officials, agriculture and agribusiness account for seventeen percent of all jobs in the state, and an annual economic impact of ninety-one point eight billion dollars, and is a vital aspect of the economy in North Carolina. And whereas county commissioners have a responsibility to ensure the basic needs of our citizens are met, and whereas the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, under the direction of President Ronnie Smith, will be leading a task force to address food system resiliency, to help counties take action to ensure the resources we have are getting to the people in need. And whereas, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Task Force will be meeting to examine the various issues that go into creating and sustaining a resilient food system for our residents. And whereas, by supporting our farmers, supply chains, agribusiness, food industry, and hungry families, we can build resilient communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners do hereby support the work of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Task Force, and will commit to examining the food system in Alexander County, and take steps to help strengthen the system and the service of sustaining a thriving community. This the fourth day of January two thousand and twenty-one. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution from our president, Ronnie Smith, and from the Association of County Commissioners.
Second.
The motion's made. Second, is there any discussion?
Not about this, but not about this. And in the, in Ohio, during deer season, hunters are allowed to drop off deer at different places, and they process that meat, and then they, they distribute it to people who don't have meat. But in North Carolina, that's not permitted.
Let's do it.
Anyone, does anyone know why that's, why that's not possible?
You have to have it, I believe you have to have it processed at a, like an approved inspected processor, and then there would have to be funds. So if, if I was a hunter, I would have to pay to have that processed. Then it could be, I believe, donated to like a food pantry or something like that.
Yeah, well, and that's, wait, there's a fair, you still have to pay to have it processed, but then they, they give it to people. So it's to do with the facility? It has to like be USDA facility or something?
No, it would have to be an inspected most likely. So like a, it may not have to be USDA because it's not crossing state lines, but it would have to be a North Car, a state inspected facility. So, you know, and then some of the processors are not doing it now, do with Denison or, you know, games, because they've had such a high demand for processing the cattle and the, you know, the, the pigs. So, you would just, you know, there are some available, some processors around here that do games, but, you know, like, you know, beef meats used to do, you know, games, if they don't do that enough, then they've had such high demands.
Oh, yeah, they're six months out on cows.
Yeah. So, so there are people that will do it. You just, you know, get the word out to the hunters and then coordinate with food banks and, and things like that, just needs to be processed and packaged by an inspected facility.
You know, we're, we're past the window this year, but that might be something that we could look at creating next year, because there's a, a lot of hunters, and a lot of hunters who would love to shoot a deer and don't need another deer, and to, to, you know, pay whatever it costs to donate it to someone.
Yeah.
The other issue that you listed there too is infrastructure as well too. So you looked at a food pantry, many, many of our food pantry is not equipped to handle raw meat as well. So there's a food safety issue to that as well.
Freezer space, they would need a digital freezer space to be able to hold that meat for, you know, a period of time.
I wonder if that's an opportunity for our local hunters and churches to come together to bypass the counting and state requirements?
I will say there is like a law, and I don't know exactly which one it is, it's basically like a good, in good faith law, it's the same with canned food, right? So there is food safety concerns with canned canned foods because of botulism, but there are some rules that you can donate it to the food pantry, just depends on whether the food pantry wants to take that or not. And so it would probably be the same with Denison.
I mean, you, you would have to have inspected kitchens that it was processed, and, I mean, it's the same reason you can't go and get raw milk from a dairy farm, it's against the law. You know what I'm saying, that there's a health policy imposed there. So it would just need to be from an, it processed and an inspected facility. That's definitely something that could be coordinated and, you know, worked with, it's just, you know, you would, you would need to have either no families that are willing to take that and then have freezer space. I mean, a lot of times, these families that are in need, they don't have freezer space either to, to keep, you know, forty pounds of meat or what have you. And they would need to get it, like you say, on a weekly basis.
A good idea, but a lot of red tape and a lot of process behind it.
Yeah, just some thought that needs to go into it to.
A good four-H project.
Yeah, just some thought that needs to go into it to make sure food banks are equipped to handle that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion's on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, designation of voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. That conference will be coming up shortly and...
I'll nominate Chairman Larry Yoder.
Second.
I'll be there, so, you know. A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Board Appointments and Reappointments, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I appoint Commissioner Marty Pennel to the Veterans Committee. I appoint Commissioner Josh Lael to the Partnership for Children Board of Directors and the Western Piedmont Council of Government Policy Board Alternate, and Commissioner Jeff Peel to Farmland Preservation Board.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve those names as stated.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. French.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 36 through 44 and Project Budget Ordinance Number P1, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Budget for Receipt of Weather Storm Preparedness and Recovery Grant from Duke Energy Foundation. Plan uses for the grant include replacing an outdated radio and purchasing multiple ambient weather stations. That's number 39. Number 40 is to decrease DSS Budget for CARES Act funding that was received in advance but must be returned due to the restrictions placed on eligible expenses, which prevented using all the money to increase DSS budget for additional COVID foster care stipend funds from the state, reimburse DSS for foster care stipend payments made earlier in the budget year, to increase the DSS budget for low income home emergency assistance for COVID-19 funds from the state known as pandemic LIAP funds, and to increase the DSS budget for LIAP funds and CIP administrative cares funds from the state. That's number 40. 41 is to increase the public buildings maintenance budget for the purchase and installation of flagpoles at the county services building and for the, also doing the same thing, increasing parks recreation budget for flagpole at Rocky Face Park, using donations received plus other funds transferred for this cost. 42 is to increase the budget to transfer school capital improvement fund based on the amount of fiscal year 2020 school sales tax revenue in excess of fiscal year 2020 school debt service payments. Number 43 is to decrease detention center budget estimates for revenue and expense related to housing out of county inmates due to the health risks associated with COVID-19. The county has not been accepting inmates from other counties. 44 is to budget for the local match funds required of the county for the Piedmont Composites Building Reuse 2020 Grant Project. Department of Commerce is providing $40,000 of grant funding, and the project is for the Piedmont Composites Building Reuse Grant, and that's for, those funds will be, going to be spent towards replacing the roof. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On Amendment Number 43.
Yes, sir.
On the inmate housing revenue. Are there any COVID funds to recapture due to this, for the loss of $90,000?
No. No, there's not. Any other questions?
But that's a $90,000 that we're not paying.
Pardon?
It's $90,000 that we're not paying because we don't have people.
Well, we're not receiving the revenue from other counties.
Right.
But also that means that you're, there are some decreasing costs because you're having less meals, for example, you'll have less medical and some other things. Right now, our housing numbers are around 60, 62, somewhere in that range, and of course
Gentlemen, the amendments are before you. I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve Budget Amendments Numbers 39 through 44 as stated in P1.
Yep.
In ordinance P1, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, thank you. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
My motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. French, thank you. Other business, Mr. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, my report is just information for tonight, and I have some items for closed session.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you have the consent agenda before you.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as given.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor indicate, is there any discussion first? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. At this time, the Board of County Commissioners will adjourn to go into the Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. We will, at that time, we will adjourn, come back into session under the county commissioners and go into a closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143, Dash 318, Dash 11A, 5 and 6, contractual personnel. We'll do that at the end of the Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. Gentlemen, the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting, we would like to see us approve that with the exception of item number four. Item number four will be delayed until a later date. I make a motion to approve that board meeting with that exception.
Second motion.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Gary. Gary Herman. How many people are at Piedmont Composites now? Really? So they're, you know, when we went and they told us what all they were doing, that... I don't remember, but I know they had some challenges, and I just wanted to, they're moving and doing, like diversifying like they said?
I think that was, wasn't it around 40 employees when we were down there?
They're replacing a roof that's really expensive, so we're happy to have a box.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't questioning that at all. I was just curious about if they, how their business was going, I guess, most of, sort of.
To be honest, I'm, since I'm a public official, I don't know that we get...
I thought you knew everything.
He don't have his phone with him. At this time, I'd call the County Commissioners Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting into session. Item number one on the agenda is public comment. Did we have anyone for public comment? No one for public comment. Thank you very much.
He's still on TV.
Yes. Item number two, Social Services Update. Lynda Clemmons, Assistant DSS Director. Lynda?
Thank you for having me tonight. All right, social services. Wanted to give you some updates about activities we've been doing, but also give you some warning about some stuff coming up in the next year. So if you can go to the next slide, the first thing, I wanted to give a little bit of update of what DSS has done in support of the flood survivors. This kind of builds on, Doug talked a little bit, or referred to this a little earlier. We did man the site on November 12th, when the evacuation site was open at 7:30, along with the Health Department and East Taylorsville Baptist Church staff, who were just wonderful to work with. They've really still continued to be involved in this project. After that, we've been involved with assessing their needs, helping to coordinate with the churches about what needs make sense, helping to prioritize those needs. The churches wanted us to try to help make sure that there was, weren't any issues, especially when they were looking at who was going to be offered campsites at the fairgrounds, if there were any issues of past or any, anything of concern. They just kind of wanted some assessment input from us. In general, it's gone quite well. At this point in time, if it's not publicly known, we're no longer accepting donations. We've kind of been overwhelmed with donations and still are going to have to figure out how to process some of what's at the fairgrounds. Billy Walker was very involved in helping us inventory and provide those donation items. At this point, what we've been doing, and Doug talked about this earlier, he put the slides up there that talked about the Small Business Association and other funding available. Those programs really, as Billy was also talking about, assume citizens have access to email or internet. So we've really been out working with all the survivor families, making sure they know how to apply for the small business loans. Many of them may not qualify because it does depend on you having a decent credit rating and some level income. If you don't qualify for that, then you can go for further state assistance, but you have to go through that process first. So there's a number of steps for the community members to get financial assistance after this, after the flood. Any applications for this assistance? The deadline's February 2nd, so it's really important that we get that information out to the community. We have been directly talking to the flood, Hidnite Campground. We have not been involved with a whole lot of other citizens in the community that aren't, were not at the campground. So there's still other people out there that could be eligible that we have not interacted with. Any questions about any of that? At that point, we're trying to kind of back out of it right now. There was a meeting today with the church and the many churches that are working with it, still working to adopt some of these survivors here. They're looking to see if they can get those campers moved maybe sooner than later. I don't know if you heard, but I guess the water line froze over the holidays, so they didn't have water for a couple of days. And there's a few other just ongoing maintenance issues. A campground has been located in Maiden, North Carolina, but there's some reluctance on some of the survivors. They really are hoping that Hidnite Campground's going to be an option for them in the future and not really wanting to hear that that option may or may not be available. I don't know if there's any way we can facilitate that understanding because a couple of them are still holding on to that hope. Any questions on any of that? Any?
Well, not a question, just a comment. To go back in a very unsafe place would not be extremely wise, but then also, we've got to be careful that we don't set people up for something that they can't do, which is, you know, to make a permanent residence out of a camper. So, you know, and I know that a great need to live, and, you know, and our church has been involved real heavily with the situation as well, but, you know, I guess we just have to really watch, you know, we want to do everything that we can do to help, but what we help, we want it to be a permanent solution, not a, to go towards a permanent solution, not a temporary solution, which then in turn you get back in the same kind of situation that you're trying to get out of.
And we totally agree and appreciate those concerns and, yeah, this is a group of citizens that many wouldn't qualify for some of your standard housing that you may hope for. So it's, yeah, being creative, but not setting up unreasonable expectations or encouraging things that are not legally or feasible options. Yeah. I agree. Thank you. Anything else on that? I'll go to the next one. I wanted to just give a little bit of feel. Last time I talked a little bit about many audits that we are required to comply with, and this is just one of those, and it's referred to as the RITA Audit, the Recipient Eligibility Determination Audit. And this is the state randomly picks cases from our Medicaid. It varies. It had been 20 per month pre-COVID. They went down to 10 per month, and every month they review to make sure we made appropriate eligibility decisions around approvals, denials, and then internal control issues, and then give us a report on how we're doing, and we track that. We're slightly below our target for the first two areas on the appropriate approvals and denials. We're above the target on internal control issues. The last time, each month after we get our report, we have a summary call and talk about the results. The state had no concerns that we will meet the target by the end of the year. They said that they were quite pleased with the level of documentation in the cases that they audited and that it was above what they normally see for the average across the state. So that was really good to hear. We do have some challenges in this area. Adult Medicaid in particular is one of our areas that we have the most trouble maintaining staff. So maintaining these levels in audit can be quite the challenge. Just this last month, we also get results from our subsidized daycare audit, and we're compiling the responses for that. We also did very well in that audit meeting around 95% compliance. So that's just one of the many audits we have to do on a regular basis, and it can be very challenging because we can't necessarily bill some of this, but we have to comply and provide all the funding and, I mean, hours and supporting documentation on any case that's pulled out. The next...
That's good news.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, this is a brand new, that doesn't look really pretty up there. The month is kind of spread out. A new program is going to be, is being in, the process of being implemented across the state. This is based on some federal recommendations that anyone that is a caseworker in NCFAST by the end of this fiscal year, so by end of June, it's supposed to be completed, every worker is supposed to be certified in use of NCFAST. So that requires some training, it requires testing. I believe it's a score of 70% or better. You get three attempts to pass, and so far everyone, the passing rate's been in the 90% across the state. Alexander County is in Group 5, so we don't start until May, but that's just an expectation. Every three years, you have to be recertified.
Wait, who does this training?
It's, the state does the training.
Okay, but we hire somebody new? How do they get trained? Is it online? They got to go somewhere?
Yes, it is online. It's actually through NCFAST. I'm not exactly sure, I haven't actually seen the training, but it's scheduled through NCFAST. That's an excellent question. I don't have the exact answer how we schedule it for new staff. We have new coming in this month, so they'll be in time.
Because that's been a problem that we've had for, since we've started down this road.
Yep.
And so, and in current staff, to get recertified, that's, you say it's online?
Yes, the programs, it's all, the certification is actually within NCFAST, and so the training's there too, and they've got a specific learning gateway training site that has all these programs in there. How we, I'm guessing, but I haven't, it is totally a guess, that part of when you apply for a new online ID to get into the system, that there'll be some time... that there'll be sometime, a timeframe where you have to complete certification. But I don't know that for a fact, and I will ask.
And not being critical here at all, just trying to understand. But, so then a new person, they kind of just train themselves?
Yes and no. Right now, we have an internal checklist that we require. I don't know what the mandates in NC FAST are. NC FAST, once, if you're not certified, you won't be able to work in the system after the end of June. As far as how, with the timeframe and new employees, I'm assuming it's going to have something similar that we have on our other systems that you can't do eligibility training until you've completed so many of the training programs in NC FAST for that particular program area. So I think this will be added on to the current training in NC FAST before you can actually get in and process and submit a new application.
But this could bite us if we don't get ahead of the eight ball.
Say that again?
This could bite us if we don't get ahead of the eight ball because everything has to do with NC FAST.
Everything on the income maintenance side, yes. And apparently, my understanding is child welfare in 2022 will be going back in there. So then it'll be all DSS at that time.
One more question. The training for this, is this during the workday or at the employee's leisure? What is it?
No, it's during the workday. It's, it's more, it's hours we can't bill, but it's during the work. It'd be our 990, non-billable time during work. Anything else?
Well, while we're talking about NC FAST, you know, we've, seems as though we've been in unison that several government programs are not extremely user-friendly. Have they made any headway in progress in making it a better system?
Yes and no. I mean, they have made some system checks that are somewhat improved. For example, when you enter information, you try to put in a new client and you enter a name and a date of birth, it will do some automatic verifications that there's not someone in there with the same or just, or slightly different information, and make sure you double-check that. And it's improved that across areas that it didn't used to do. But it's just not basically designed as an intuitive system. I've had previous experience in writing specs for IT system, and usually you write a spec up and document the process before you buy the package. We got into a contract for NC FAST and then designed it after we had already bought a package, and it's just not intuitive. It doesn't follow the process. It's kind of based on, put data here, 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 and here, and then the system trying to figure it out.
When we told them we didn't want it, and they told us, "Too bad."
Ah, yes, and that's what we, yeah, it's what we have, and it's not going to change for a long time.
Thank you.
I wish I could say differently. Next thing is Medicaid transformation. I think you've probably heard of this before, if you've been around for a while. This was supposed to be implemented back in 2019, but the NC State Legislature put it on hold. They held the budget, which put it in a totally, it was on hold entirely for a few months and then came back when it was first going to be implemented. Last year, it was going to be staged in different regions across the state. They had got partway into implementation previously and figured they have a better understanding of how it was going to go. So now it's going across the state all at once. So it's going to totally change Medicaid from a fee for service to managed care, which means that instead of the state just contracting directly with providers like a medical office, we will contract with insurance companies that will get paid so much per person to provide well-rounded, whole-person-centered care, which assesses all needs, not just the direct medical need, and they're hoping that this will lead to healthier people in general. Do you guys, if you're interested in more information about it, we are concerned about how confusing this might be for recipients. I'm not, I wasn't sure how much you've gotten previous education in this area.
Follow the dollar. Follow the dollar.
Follow the dollar, okay. The next two slides here are just kind of timelines on what the process is going to look like. The website went live on November 1st. January 1st is really this launch where they're starting to send out information to all the clients to tell them they're going to have to enroll in this new system. Right now, they're working on getting all the six or so insurance groups are negotiating contracts with all the providers across the state so that all the providers that currently provide directly to the state will now go through these insurance groups. So they're setting all those contracts. They have to be in place if they want to be part of open enrollment by February 1st. If they don't make it and are, do have a contract by April 12th, then there'll be an auto enrollment. So this is kind of a complicated slide, just showing some of the main dates. The next one probably is more from the client standpoint. The two main areas in the green line, from March 15th through May 15th, is when clients can actually go online, pick their insurance broker, get advice about which plan they want. If they do not enroll by May 15th, they will automatically be enrolled from then until July 1st, when this program goes live. This will apply to about 75% of current people on Medicaid plans. It doesn't include some specific more difficult cases. Some of the high-need mental health cases, foster care cases will stay Medicaid Direct until a later date, about a year later, then they'll go, everyone will go managed care. So the role of DSS will be still to determine eligibility. So applications will still come to DSS to determine if they meet the income and asset range to qualify for the state Medicaid program, which will be a managed care program. But how they get the service and going through these insurance brokers and then get, go to the primary care physician is just going to look different. Won't be the role of DSS.
Who will help that person go through that process?
They, they have enrollment brokers that these insurance companies are all supposed to be setting up that they can call these numbers and ask questions about what the program looks like. We're not allowed to give that advice. We're just supposed to tell them where they can go to ask those questions. So it's going to be, it's kind of complicated. It's, see how it works. Any, any other questions? It's, I anticipate we'll have a lot of people calling with, with questions or just concerns about how it's going to impact them. It's, in some ways should be better. I mean, if they, it's kind of like right now, if you enroll for health insurance that we have, and if you complete the different quizzes about, are you getting mail coverage? Have you gone in for your yearly exam? And you get those $25 credits. Well, this is going to have some things like that, that is going to encourage people to be more well-rounded and buy healthy food. So it's going to look at the whole person and not just look necessarily right at the medical care. That's the intent and the thought behind the process. I think it's thrilling. The next one, these are just some acts upcoming, just so that you know about some different requirements we're going to have. We have first, what people have familiarly heard of Ryan's Law. Directly impacts all of how we provide services for family and children protection. There's a lot of reform going on that started first with an independent evaluation of how services primarily in child welfare provided. And that was that evaluation that in one of the five or so different areas it addressed was NC FAST. It looked at whether or not we should buy a whole separate system or put enhancements in NC FAST to be useful. And they opted to recommend staying with NC FAST. So that's that implementation in 2022. It also includes changing to more regional supervision across the state. There's a Transformation Council. I'm not sure exactly how that may impact us locally. And now we're going to have data dashboards that are going to be available for public viewing. They're, right now, only directors can get it as they work out the details. The, every county is going to be required to sign an MOU, and we will be tracked on those metrics that are on the data dashboard. The first timeframe will be this January, starting now through June 30th, and then it'll be annual fiscal year. The next two slides show examples of that data dashboard. This is food and nutrition. What you'll see is there are about, there's 10 metrics that we will be measured like every month. And then there's another four metrics for child support that are end-of-the-year measures. So these are three measures. On this first slide on the data dashboard are food and nutrition program. And you can see there's three areas on, three targets for food and nutrition. The one is the expedited applications. Are they processed within four days? It shows how, what percentage we're doing, what the, what the state rate is average. And it's hard to read there, but it also has the 95% is the target. Then the next one is regular applications. Get the target in 95% again. This is processed within 25 days. Alexander County's 100% versus the state at 98%. And then recertifications, the target again, 95% on time. Alexander County's 100% versus 97% most of the state. So on these particular metrics, right now, we're doing well. The next slide shows four more metrics that are all for adult services. The first two have to do with abuse and neglect reports and our completing evaluations within timeframe. And the last two have to do with special assistance for aged and disabled applications and how we're doing in that area. And adult services right now is doing a very good job of meeting all the required timeframes, as you can see here. These were just examples right now. Like I said, they are not available for general public until they work some things out. But I think the timeframe is sometime next year that they want to make sure. This is one of the issues I know of in child welfare. We would have processing issues where data would go up, and we'd have a month or two to verify the data and correct the data. And what they want to make sure is that's not happening now because it would be a real perception issue with the public if they looked at data, saw it, and then it changed two months later. It looked like you were going back and massaging your data versus correcting it. So there's still some data collection issues they want to address before it goes public. But these are the MOU's dashboard metrics that we will be tracked for the next year and a half for DSS. Any questions about any of that? I think there will be other metrics in the future. These are ones that honestly were easy for them to track. One more act coming up in child welfare has a real possibility of dramatically changing child welfare. It's trying to take the emphasis off of reimbursing funds for children after they come in child welfare and put more emphasis on prevention before they enter care. It's really difficult. It's, I fully endorse and think it's a great concept, but it's really difficult to make sure you have services in a small county like this to help families out and be able to get them what they need. I hope, I, I hope that the, we're able to do that and more work with some of our local providers to make sure we have those services available. It's also going to support more trauma-focused and evidence-prevention plans. It's also going to make it more of a challenge as Part 4 here is it's a greater emphasis on using family foster homes and not congregate placements. We don't have a lot of those in Alexander County, but occasionally have some very high-risk children that foster homes are unwilling to keep until their behaviors are more stabilized. So that's going to be a challenge in making sure that we have adequate training for all our family placements to handle some of these more challenging behaviors. But it also has the ability, hopefully, to extend foster care, potentially from age 21 to 23. All this work is in progress. They're supposed to begin implementation July 1st. A member of one of the state teams looking at how we're going to manage the quality control in this. And it's, it's quite a challenge. I'm not sure how successful we're going to be, at least starting from the beginning. It's not going to have a whole lot. It's going to take a while.
Where are they going to get the money to put more in family preservation? More in the care that you're giving, and then more in 21 to 23 that would, you know, is a tough area anyhow? What, where's, where are all these funds going to come from?
They're hoping, the premise is on that if you can do a better job of the prevention upfront, you won't have as many in foster care, so you won't have to spend as much money there. And they're also hoping that by putting additional criteria around staying in congregate long-term care and getting back in a family foster home, that there will be savings there because the cost is usually three or four times more expensive in the congregate home. This is, there isn't going to be any extra money that, I mean, they're not going to, they're, they're just going to reallocate funding they are currently giving us and try to move it around in the different pots. That's the bottom line. I don't know that there's really extra funding coming.
Do what will ultimately be is more programs with the same amount of money, so you have less to put in them.
I don't, I can't. It's still being designed. Some of it is around how we practice. But it's, it's going to be really difficult in rural areas because it has such a focus on getting services in place. And how do you, yeah, it's going to be a real challenge.
I applaud what you do because it's tough.
Well, and, and as a current and past foster parent, that sounds really good. You know, I mean, I hate to say this, but, come on, Riley. Yeah. You know, if we talk, if we talk to people that nobody will use drugs anymore. And if we provide them services, nobody will use drugs anymore. And if we make sure that they have, you know, if we make sure that nobody's been mean to them today, I'm talking about the parents. I'm not talking about the children. I'm talking about the, excuse me, the birthing people. Because they're not parents, you know, some of them don't qualify to be called parents. But, you know, they'll just, they'll stop their outlandish activities and be upstanding citizens who are wonderful parents from then on. And I hope everyone can sense the sarcasm in my voice. Because if you can't, yeah.
And I hear you, these are generational issues that you're not going to.
Right, and it's, you know, and, and like I say, and I know, and the thing about it is, is you guys are going to get stuck with trying to deal with it. And even after you do deal with it, wait till you get a phone call on Thursday night at 10:30 that some, some fruitcake judge decides that they don't think you have enough evidence to do this or that and take the children home at 10:30 on Thursday night, even though DSS thinks they've done what's best for the child and everybody else does too. It's, yeah. I won't get on my suck box, but.
It's frustrating, and coming from someone that's worked in a couple of different counties, it's even frustrating inconsistency of the court system across the state. I just want to say thank you. Friends helped us out last week. We had a child in the hospital we couldn't get a placement for, and we thought we were going to have to babysit that, that child over the New Year's weekend at the DSS. And he was able to help us through via, get some help there. I want to publicly appreciate that. Made a big difference for us this past weekend. But it's really hard sometimes if you don't have the right person to contact. You end up in some not-good situations, so.
Yeah, tough job.
Keeps you very busy and, yeah. And I thank you. And I thank you all for your support and recognize, recognition of how difficult this can be, and especially when you have limited resources and timeframes you have to meet.
What's really interesting, though, is to look at the different ways that the state and the federal government can take our money and then give us all these hoops to jump through to give it back to us at a cost. That's, that's real interesting. That's quite a system. And it's DSS, everything, so, but yeah, that's, red tape and bureaucracy really convolutes the fact that it gets in the way of helping people.
It certainly adds some challenge to what the process, yes.
You're a whole lot more well-spoken about the fact, and thank you.
Thank you. This next one here is just a real quick heads up that over the last many years, as long as I've been doing this work, we would get federal funds for kids in foster care and adult wards that was directly through Social Security Administration. And we used to just kind of budget that money. It kind of came through us, but it went right out, right back out to that particular need. For instance, if we had a child in foster care who was getting SSI payments, we would use those payments instead of county and state funds to pay for the foster care payments. None of that will change, except they have found somewhere that the state was out of compliance. So starting next year, we will have a new budget line that is going to track all these. So it's really not changing the funds up or down, but it will show that the budget goes up a couple hundred thousand next year. So it's just a required tracking difference. So I'm just kind of letting you know. More hoops we jumped through just to make sure we're meeting audit requirements. Questions? No. This next one here is a community child protection team. This team is a state requirement. We meet minimally every other month, well, we try to meet every other month. The state requirement is we meet quarterly. This past year, we only met quarterly because of the difficulty getting people together, especially school people with their Zoom schedule. But the purpose of our community child protection team is to make sure we have interdisciplinary community representatives meeting regularly to talk about community-wide approaches for child abuse and neglect. And kind of going back to what we were talking about previously, this has been probably more effective than a lot of the state help. This is really getting our community together. It includes social services, public health, law enforcement, GL, school personnel. And each month, we will discuss about three or four cases in child welfare from a high level, what's the family challenge, what's the child challenge, what's the parents' challenge? And kind of as a group with service providers in the whole county, talk about, have we tried this, can you do this? This new type of therapy just came out and is now being recognized. Maybe this will help on this child. So that's kind of what we do. We meet in these meetings. We have educational topics when we can. But one of the state requirements on top of having this committee is that we have to give you an annual report. So this next page is really the annual report. Just talks about some of the challenges. We had this last year with the consolidation. We had a change of leadership impacted coordinating this team. So our meetings had, and because of COVID, we went virtual. And as I said earlier, we didn't have as many scheduling on educational topics. We talked about things like domestic violence and human trafficking, again, to educate the whole community and the service providers about those. This is the dates we actually had meetings. On September 15th, we elected a new chairperson. And then this kind of talks about those meetings a little more detail. I already talked about the first bullet about discussing open CPS case. These could be foster care cases, they could be in-home cases, could even be a brand-new assessment case where we have a child, a family that may be lacking in resources, that we may be able to get some help from the community and help the family and close the case for child welfare involvement. One of the good things about it is one of the agenda items on every one of these meetings is to discuss child fatalities for cases open to child welfare. Thankfully, we didn't have any of those in 2020, and hopefully, that keeps happening. And we also, on an annual basis, have to complete a state community protection team survey about what we did each year and turn that in. And we did that at the November 17th. So that's officially our report on that activity by that committee this year, that team. Any, any questions? Is this sufficient? Do you need any more? That's enough information, I'm assuming? Thank you.
Sounds good.
This is just a quick overview. I think you, you know, probably heard more about COVID than you want to some days. But in general, economic services has continued. We have been allowed to accept verbal attestation from clients, which has reduced significantly our one-on-one face-to-face contact, which has been very helpful in keeping the office semi-COVID-free. Most of our services have remained very close to pre-COVID. We expected some to go up more or down some more than we expected. Medicaid's gone up a bit, but everything else is pretty much, pretty much steady, except for adult services and child protective. Both of them have had some reduction in reports. We believe that's because the general public doesn't have access to our citizens to make those reports. Adult services has continued on. I had reported last month, we had a little blip in our adult services. We go back to four hot meals a week to all of our in-home-based and congregate people that started this week. We have had a growth in the court-appointed guardianship cases. That's just, where we get to kind of make decisions for an incompetent adult that has no family member willing to do it anymore. We have some challenges sometimes, and how come Alexander County has been determined to be the county of, that won the case? It's not necessarily something we want to have more of, but lately, they've been going up. One person was someone about to be released from the jail and had incompetent and needed help making decisions. And so this court gave us guardianship. That's kind of the cases we get, or a family member might maybe was doing in the past and can no longer do it. For both adult services and child protective, we've maintained making face-to-face contacts, still going out to the family and monitoring safety as much as we can. We take protection, wear masks, try to schedule ahead of time. In some cases, we do some things by Zoom, but for the most part, you really cannot assess safety in a house with a Zoom call. We can do some. As of this month, we've gone back with our foster care visitation between family, parents and child, we've gone back to doing some of them Zoom, because that was probably one of our biggest risks, having parents and children come into the agency for a face-to-face visit. And with the sudden increase in COVID percentage, we've just started going back to Zoom on those this month. Any questions on the COVID impact in general? I think there's just one last slide. I just wanted to follow up. Last month, I, or two months ago, I guess, I'd actually talked about all the different programs we had, and I just kind of wanted to do a little bit of a summary slide here around how the economic impact from our services, hopefully, keeps, it is higher than our cost, put it that way, to the county. It's unfortunate that we need to be here to do some of this, but if we do need to be here, this was just kind of an overview that when you look at the funds that go through DSS that we distribute to the community for food nutrition, adult assistance, if you look at all those different programs, it's close to $7 million that gets distributed to the county and, and spent on needed, on needed services. That does not include Medicaid, because we don't actually, we just determine eligibility, and that payments get state, paid directly from the state. It doesn't include some of the EBT cards that went to schoolchildren, the value of some of the meals sent out, and then just general staff salaries meant in the county. So I know that we are a expense for the county. Just kind of wanted to end up with a, hopefully, on a positive note, that hopefully, we are even, it's an indirect help distributor of the funding. Any questions overall?
Yes, you said something about someone in jail that you took custody of. What was that?
We didn't, well, we don't actually, it's for adult guardians we don't necessarily take custody of. We become their legal guardian to help make sure that they are getting assistance with making decisions around appropriate medical care. For example, if they go in the hospital, we get pulled into making decisions about treatment. Make sure that if they are older and need to have a DNR and that kind of stuff, we help them with those decisions. There's two different aspects to guardianship. There's guardianship of the person, there's guardianship of their, of their finances. Oftentimes, will be guardianship of the person and not the money. Sometimes it's both, it kind of depends. Sometimes family members are willing to still help with the financial part, but it's too emotional to get involved in some of these other decisions. So helping them, maybe, we had one person whose family couldn't handle it anymore, and we helped them find an adult facility for IDD adults, and just helped them get in there and go through the application process, and then just monitor them. And most of the time, it's very high-specific at the very beginning when we first get guardianship, but once we get them stabilized, it's just kind of a monthly contact to make sure everything's going all right. But yeah, we don't, we don't actually, it's, it's a little different than children custody when we actually control all their decisions. They're still responsible for their day-to-day eating and clothing and stuff like that. We just help more in guidance in big decisions. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you very much. Very informative about a lot of different things.
I appreciate it.
Lot of information. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Senior Center update. Leanne Winston.
Thank you, Lynda. Lynda is doing a marvelous job at the Department of Social Services, because with COVID, I have been slacking my duties and helping her out there. So she is doing a great job. And you know, one of the earliest duties, I did not understand how, how detailed that guardianship for Department of Social Services was till within the first month of consolidating. We had a guardian that was terminal and was in the hospital, and he did not have a do-not-resuscitate. So they're calling me, and I'm making decisions on whether to terminate his life support. I mean, that's, that's a tough decision for an agency. It helped that I had medical background, so, you know, with the physician's recommendation and, but that was on the Department of Social Services. So I made that decision for, in lieu of this person did not have family. And you know, I didn't realize how detailed some of their decision-makings were for clients that were not capable of making their own decisions. So, sorry. I'll move on to the senior center. Christine is not able to be with us tonight, so I am doing her presentation for her. We wanted to show you the Medicare savings, open enrollment, of course. New enrollees, we do each month, but that October to December time is very, very busy. As you can see, the graph, we did have us help our citizens save $903,703. The goal was a million. On the next slide, you'll see some of those reasons. We do, we do now only have three staff members. The prior years, we've had three, and now we have two full-time people. And we were not able to use, or did not feel like we should pull in those senior volunteers with COVID and all that was going on. So normally, there's eight people helping, three full-time, one part-time, and five volunteers. So I'm very proud of the work they did. That is very close to a million dollars in an unprecedented time of, of COVID. So they have helped 389 seniors during that 20, during that, in, that just, that's just the people during that last open enrollment period. And you'll see some of the impacts for the senior center during COVID. They still are, are there. They may not be open, because we don't want people sitting together playing cards and touching things, but they're still manning a lot of phone calls. They're doing interactions outside if they can, if it's not too cold. Sometimes they're inside, but they're trying their best, you know, to keep people safe and distanced. So lots of needs. Sometimes it's just helping them read some forms, understanding. Sometimes it's scams, and luckily, they know to come and ask for help. So we are still there helping, and right now, they are really helping. We are planning a special COVID vaccination at the senior center on this Thursday. So they are very active right now. Actually, today, we just about filled up that whole day. So, and the person that's out there doing that today, Kristy Hunt, we want to congratulate her. She actually won the award for excellence in customer service. And I think anybody that's met her at the senior center would think she is well-deserving. This North Carolina Department of Insurance Senior Health Insurance Information Program, SHIP, much easier to say SHIP, isn't it? Is awarding that. Mike Causey is coming on January the 25th. I'm not sure how open they're wanting that to be because of COVID and, and distance, but he is actually bringing that certificate to her on January 25th. So we are very proud of her. She is an excellent employee, goes above and beyond to help those seniors any way she can. They've actually had a cart outside where you can donate books, pick up books. They've done all kinds of diaries. They've done lots of things from just daily phone calls, checking on our seniors, you know. It's been very lonely having to stay in and stay away from people. And some of those calls are just heart-wrenching, you know. Thank you for calling. I hadn't talked to anybody in a week, you know. So they are definitely still out there and very busy.
That's amazing, too, though. Just on the, on the Medicare savings, they didn't hit you gold for a million, but it's close. 300, $903,000 goes back into our community. $2,300, $2,400 a pop for people who went in there and had that help. I mean, that's, and that's year after year. Amazing job.
And people need to let them help them, because you think, once you've picked a plan, that plan is, you know, that's a plan. But every year, those medication formularies change. So they, you know, plug all that information in the computer and, you know, one of the last cases, I remember Kristy talking to me, she saved the person $3,000. You know, that's a lot of money when you're on a fixed income, and maybe you're only making $600 a month in that social security check. So huge impacts for our citizens.
Well, that's that whole check.
Yeah, that's, that's huge. Yes. County manager and I discussed budget, and so since budget is so soon, and we knew there was lots of information, you've got information in your packet. If, if you are reading that and have questions, feel free to call me. But we'll go over this very much in detail in the next month or two with the next meeting, as we build budgets. Chad, you can screen through these pretty quick. The first one was health DSS. And then I do want to, want you to look at, just for a second, on one of these, I was trying, the next one, I was trying to capture, as, as we're looking at DSS's budget, you know, this was my first year at this budget, and I've talked to you about how complex that is. We do see that increasing. So I wanted you to look at the DSS position postings, though, because I was trying to find numbers, because we know we're almost fully staffed. Well, when we consolidated, what, a year and a half ago? Oh, there was, in 1819, you can see there were 48 position postings in that year. In 1920, there was 28, and in 2021, there's only been 16. I hope 21 to 22 is even half of that. We will have some postings, because people retire, people move, people have children and want to get, stay home and parent. But part of, part of that budget increase is because now we are fully staffed. COVID, Lynda mentioned a little bit about when we're doing training, or if we- COVID, Lynda mentioned a little bit about when we're doing training, or if we are, for instance, if a DSS employee is quarantined at home and is not doing client care, and they have to code to 990, that's all county money. So we try really hard to keep them focused on client care, client services, what they're hired to do, not training, not doing extra anything, because that makes a huge difference in that DSS budget of how they code. We also, of course, did some salary increases, and we did have that payback, which we caught in, you heard at the last meeting about the audit, but we had already caught that. But that was, that was a pretty good chunk. So, and we'll go into more detail of that when we look at budgets. But Billy Walker provided you, it's the Health Department program budget, it looks like this in your packet. I'm not going to read it to you, because it is huge training and education. It will serve two purposes. You have to have annual training as your, as the Board of Health for accreditation. This is it. So your homework's to read it. A lot of it is refresher for much, most of you. It talks about the essential public health services, because as we start building a budget, I wanted you to have access to what we get for state money, what is local money, what we have to do and what we don't have to do, what's mandated and what's not mandated. And it goes through each of those programs, gives you a little synopsis about what each program is, how much state funding we get, how much is local, and what staff work in those programs. So it's just kind of a nice little cheat sheet. Again, it's pretty detailed, you know, it touches on every program, school, nurse funding, it talks about. You know, we don't have employees there, we're a pass-through for the school system to hire those school nurses. So it just tells you those little snippets. It's kind of a Cliff Note version of the public health budget and what our programs do. So that is your training. Wasn't that nice, easy training? And then we're going to do, twice a year, we do bad debt write-off. And to protect our clients, medical information and HIPAA, we're going to do that in closed session. So unless you have questions, that's our consolidated agenda for tonight. And lots of that, as you read and do that, if you have questions, you know where to find me. Of course, I'm probably on the phone, but I'll call you back. And I do want to reiterate what Ms. Walker said about public health. You know, we're getting a lot of complaints because people can't get through, they're having to leave messages. We set that hotline number up this morning, and within 30 minutes, it, the capacity, it was full. We scheduled 300 people for vaccines just today. We've diverted all of our staff, I mean, every last one of us are working on COVID. And I know, I know people are anxious and nervous and want to talk to us, and we want to talk to them, but it's taking about 10 minutes to register each of those people for a vaccine. And so we're trying our hardest. We pulled the, as Doug Gillespie mentioned, we pulled the preparedness coordinator into our office today. He got there a little bit before lunchtime, and he was like, within an hour, he said, I need 10, you need 10 of me. He said, I've already got 130 calls wanting vaccines.
And he just needed to get that.
And he, I mean, he could make those calls in about six minutes. And we've, I've talked to other counties, and it was taking seven to 10. So he was doing excellent. It helped that he had also worked for 911 in the past, so he was very comfortable with collecting data and scheduling. But we appreciate people's patience, because the state system for registering these vaccines is not working. It has really been a challenging time, and people think, okay, we've got vaccine, we've moved to vaccine, but we haven't stopped testing for people that are sick. We still have contact tracing work, so we just keep adding layers on them. And I went down there just to kind of give a pep talk and walk around, and, you know, they're tired. I mean, we've been, we've been at this extra work for almost a year now, and it's no end in sight, and they are dedicated, they're working so hard. But it is hard when they, you know, get complaints when they're, they're working, you know, seven days a week. Ms. Walker comes in on the weekends, she and I, you know, we're, we're working week, I mean, it's hard. So we appreciate people being patient and realizing, we will call you back. And we're actually ahead of a lot of counties. There's several counties on a call I did today with our regional health directors, several of them are still on 1A. They're not even close to being able to, they're not even halfway through their 1A group. So, you know, I think we're doing really well, but we will call you back. If, if the line says it's full, try again. I know I've had a few call the county office, and then they email me their name and phone number, and I think there were seven people in the office trying to make those phone calls back to schedule today. So, and if it lets you know anything, we scheduled that senior center site for Thursday, and it's already almost full in one day of scheduling. So we'll do some more of those. But we can't stop the other duties. We've still got to do testing on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We still have some of our clinics. We've scaled back all that we can, but pregnant women have to be seen. So my staff is working so hard, I'm very proud of them, and I'm glad so far, they're hanging in there. Can I answer any questions before we?
I'll make a statement. I'm proud of the way our departments are working and trying to handle the situation that they've never experienced before. Our society has become a instant now society. I want it right this second in a lot of different things in life. But our county is small, it's limited. I believe that we use our resources very well, and people in positions at the Health Department, Department of Social Services and others, our emergency personnel, law enforcement, we've all picked up extra duties. And you know, as time goes on, you get weary, but I truly appreciate it from myself and our family.
We thank you so much for that. And, and you know, there are lots of rewards, too. I had a gentleman that emailed me over the weekend, and I was actually out of town over the weekend, and he was apologizing for, you know, emailing me on the weekend, and I said, I don't mind a bit. Monday morning, I will get you, you know, an appointment, send me your name and phone number. And so today, we got he and his wife scheduled, and, you know, he's like, thank you, that was really quick. And, you know, it makes it worthwhile when you, because we are here to help. My staff are here to help the public, so I appreciate that, because they are excellent. And this, you know, I've been here over 30 years, and I've, I've never seen, I've seen outbreaks, and I've seen other pandemics, but not a COVID-19 pandemic. This is definitely the most challenging time I've ever worked in. So, you know, we just do what we can do and move on. I mentioned the preparedness coordinator, you know, I said, I appreciate you saying that, because he saw firsthand, you know, wow, we need 10 more people answering the And hopefully, we can move to those groups. Some of this, we cannot, we have to follow the state guidance, too. We were told last week that today, we could move to Group 1B. Well, then, last night, we get an email, Billy and I, that says, not until Wednesday. You know, the state system that we're supposed to be able to schedule vaccines in, you're supposed to be able to schedule in, they're going to do that upgrade on the 8th, so that that'll work. Well, they've been telling the public to go in there and schedule for two weeks. So I mean, it is very hard, you know, the, and the public is very nervous. I mean, this is scary. They have loved ones dying, so we understand that. But I do appreciate that support.
And I absolutely echo what Marty said, but on the, on the phone call piece, the back and forth, you know, one, sometimes thinks, well, that's a pretty easy task, but it's not an easy task, because there's a lot of qualifiers that go into that phone call. So I guess what I'm saying is, to what degree of knowledge or ability does someone have to have who could come and help you with the phone call piece of things?
Well, and, and we're having to be really careful, because that's also HIPAA and privacy.
Right.
So even like, to get emergency EMS to help us, we had to go back and redo our standing orders and have them re-signed. So I mean, there's lots of rules and regulations in legal, because we never want to get the county into any kind of legal jeopardy. So, you know, as far as volunteers, if somebody would like to volunteer, the easiest thing is like at the senior center, helping people with paperwork and kind of crowd control. So people can always do that. Now, as far as making some of those appointments, we're hesitant to let untrained people, because some people may not want to tell a volunteer their medical condition.
Right.
And they may have questions. So, you know, we do have to get a little bit of medical information to make sure they haven't been sick in the last month with COVID, because that's a, we need to make sure that they aren't on, aren't on certain, or have certain diagnosis with bleeding disorders. If we're not sure, we have them to call their doctor. So if anybody has bleeding disorders, on lots of anticoagulants, meaning blood thinners, we're also referring them back to their doctor, just to say, should I take the vaccine? So there are some medical questions that people do need to understand.
My question, I guess, really gets, the root of it is, is that, okay, I can't take someone from HR, finance, or temp and do this job, really.
You really can't. And what we, where we need the most help was really a nurse, and so, or somebody to vaccinate. So that's where EMS stepped up, and that's going to be a great help. And we're also now trying to prepare for even Phase 1B-2, so that we're not, I mean, we're trying to get this vaccine out just as fast as humanly possible. So Gary is helping us even get ready for the manufacturing side. I've worked with the school system, we've had a couple conversations today to get ready for those teachers, you know. We want to be ready. When we get the 75 and older done, hopefully, the state will let us move, and we're ready to move. A lot of counties are not as far ahead as we are. So I'm very proud of our staff. I mean, the community may not feel it, but three of the seven counties on the calls today aren't even ready to start the 1B group yet. They're still back where we were last week. And we have vaccine, so, and we do appreciate emergency management, they've been great, because we got vaccine that needed dry ice, and all we had to do is say, hey, come help us safely put more dry ice on this vaccine, because we take that very seriously, making sure that vaccine is controlled, kept at the temperatures, and is safe when we give that to our community members. So no, it, I mean, we've pulled people that we can, we've trained our internal staff, because we have confidentiality agreements with our own staff. They know not to go out to Walmart and say, oh, I saw so-and-so today, or I talked to so-and-so, and did you know they had whatever? You know, that can get you into big trouble. So it is a fine line of who can help us and who can't. But we try not to turn down help now. So if somebody's really wanting to help, I can usually find something for them to do, make copies, make, and like you heard Billy say, we, this system was not working. So today, we said, forget it, let's go to paper. I mean, it's more work on public health, because now we've got a data entry, all that, but it's worth it, because, I mean, we've gotten a large number of 90-plus folks on our schedule to vaccinate Wednesday and Thursday. They don't have an email address, and it can't be their family members. It has to be a single identifiable individual email address. Because then you, you get an email, you have to go on and do this big questionnaire, then you've got to wait for the email back from us to say, go online and schedule your appointment. Well, the online won't work, so then you wind up calling us, because it won't work. Paper's been, we may just stick with paper.
So how do you ultimately get around that email part of it, then?
We data entry them. And so then, the state doesn't have the accurate numbers, and we have to call and say, we uploaded you a list of vaccines. And they say, oh, yeah, the system's not working well, we'll fix it later. It's very frustrating.
Technology, when it works, is real good, but, you know.
It is. And when it, they have ti, I mean, and probably when we're about done, this will be a really good system.
Yeah.
I mean, it has some good capacity.
Yeah, hopefully, just as you said, with EMS, this extra location, and, you know, maybe that'll get some relief, where you can do some other things on the inside, but...
I hope so, because I tell you...
The public is just like, I mean, nobody's been through this before, so they're on edge.
They are.
Everybody's kind of on edge from being covered up, so.
And I think emotions are running high, too. I mean, I think people are really stressed.
Yeah, hopefully, it'll be, you know, we'll pass on to something else eventually, so.
Well, remember, we've got two different vaccines, too, so not to make things any easier, you know. We really didn't want the product that has to be kept super cold, but nobody asked us. So now, to do the second round of vaccines, we've got to be very careful and make sure if you started with Pfizer, you have to finish with Pfizer. One's in 21 days and one's in 28 days. So I mean, you know, that, I don't know how you could have made it any more complicated.
Could you just not take a Sharpie and write P on somebody's forehead and M on the neck?
Number one, number two.
Pfizer, Moderna.
[laughing]
And just tell not to wash, not to shower.
Well, I appreciate that report, Leanne, and what we're going to do now, we're going to move into closed session.
Yeah.
So at this time, the Consolidated Human Services Board will adjourn, we will move into closed session under general statutes, 143-31811A, 5-6, contractual personnel, we will re-adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Say it.
Any discussion? All those favor, raise your right hand. Motion, case.
Thank you.